Okay. So, running through, we have Waylock, Waylock's coming back from ZBA. They have their approvals.
It was approved. Yeah, and they said they would get their signage under a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
Awesome, so.
So that'll come back to us for final approval. Um, you know, we're gonna take off a few of these on the list. JCC is coming back for final. Um, those are the the two entries in there. We didn't really have any significant comments. Um, so that should be a good one. Shake Shack couldn't be final. Oh, it is. Yeah.
I guess the question is, um, the only thing that's outstanding with Shake Shack is the DOT stuff. They've sent, they sent a new plan with some landscaping and with sidewalk along Bridge Street.
Right.
Um, and it went to DOT, but they haven't commented yet.
So we can have that as conditions of the approval, you know, coordination with.
Yeah.
Where, where on Shake Shack are we with Michael? He he emailed me directly, but I didn't respond to him yet about uh all his drive-through stuff.
We pulled up his original site plan from two thousand eight and it had a note on there about that that should be open. Um, yeah, I can read it to you though. The quote that was on there. It said, adjacent properties to the east and west, including the Friendly's parcel will forever have access across the reconstructed Bridge Street. So, um, I have a call into him just to explain that, um, the town is gonna want that open back up. And he's gonna, he can work with Shake Shack if he wants to try to make it safer. Um, I don't think he has any opportunities to do anything with his parking because uh state DOT won't allow any more encroachment into the right of way. And he really has no, no room on site to do anything. So it's a matter of maybe if they want to see.
So that 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 drive-through is actually a part of Bridge Street or it's not actually his property?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that right away from the county and at that point those easements were created or the cross-access agreements, so um.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha. So he owns the land, but he also bought, he also had to provide cross-access easements.
Yeah, so the department is going to work on getting that open back up.
I think the, I think the ask though is, is there any traffic calming opportunities in the parking lot layout?
Yep. Instead of a high-speed run-through for Shake Shack?
Yeah, I I feel like there's a compromise that has to.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we've looked at it.
Those are the cars that park there that can't get through the parking lot.
Yeah, uh, the speed humps are gonna just get torn up, put back down, torn up, put back down, eventually not even put back down. I think right now, the issue that he's raising, Friendly's has been vacant for a long time. I think the issue that has been raised and why the bollards went up was because there's nobody parking in the front of his lot. So it's an easy, quick zip right through.
Yes, and there are no islands.
Once you. And there's no islands in there. So, once you get to the point where you're adding cars and people and islands and it's a zigzag all the way through there, traffic is gonna become self-comic to some extent. You're not gonna get the people trying to cut through to get to Erie because it's actually gonna take longer to get all the way through Doherty's property and then the Shake Shack property on that corner. Instead of just being able to cut right through. So. I think part of it is on Doherty to make, you know, to to slow traffic if he wants to by putting some speed mediation in there, whether it be a table or uh speed bumps or something in there. But I think, once we get the islands in, we get all the cars in, you know, the the drivelines are wide. So, I think you're gonna, you're gonna slow traffic inherently through there during business hours at least.
Maybe like a stop sign between.
Can we, can we compress that, that access? It's pretty wide. It's gotta be at least uh twenty-four feet, right?
Well, twenty-four is the minimum because that's drive aisle width in town. So are you talking the the access between Shake Shack and Doherty?
Between the two. Yeah, 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 that that width right there. I mean visually by compressing it, I I think you're making it less, I guess, less inviting.
I mean, I don't see why not. I mean, I'm not a civil engineer. I just don't know like the angle of approach from Doherty's to Shake Shack. That's gonna, if just reducing the width on Shake Shack side to twenty-four feet, how that translates to the kind of
No, I don't buy that.
Call it forty-five approach from Doherty, but.
I think maybe you could like a stop sign between them, just give them a stop so they're like, just like.
And a, and a painted stop line.
Yeah.
But it's gotta be, it's gotta be approach from both sides. I mean, I guess you could paint the stop line right at the property line. For people approaching front Doherty with a stop sign. And then vice versa the other way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we have to provide enough solution or it's something they need to talk about.
No, but I think we can make that suggestion. I mean, if that's, if that's there, I mean, to Doug's point, see if that, that throat could be reduced to the minimum required.
Yeah.
And then, you know, add, I think there is a sign right there, but I don't know what that sign is. Right on the left side of the, yeah, right there.
What's um, what's keynote ten? Sorry.
On the right.
Oh, asphalt pavement.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I I I guess I would ask the question, you know, if, just, just that, just that simple move, uh, I think may be enough to help, uh, you know, reinforce discouraging fast traffic, lots of traffic between the two while still providing the the cross-access that's required. And, um, I think they can, I think the engineers could work that through.
Okay. I think that's, you know, fair. That shows good effort.
Mm-hmm.
So are we sending that to them right now so that they'll be ready for an approval?
Send them that we'd like to reduce the width of the cross-access if it's over twenty-four feet.
Yeah, just reduce that, yeah, reduce that, that throat width in there to the minimum uh necessary. To, and then adding a stop sign, bi-directional stop sign with stop line at the, at the property.
Okay, can you check something today?
And it's gonna be, it's gonna be an awkward stop coming from Shake Shack. You know, people are gonna be stopped at a forty-five trying to go through there, but.
It'll force them to.
Yeah, they'll force them to at least to stop.
Can, can, it. Can we make them make it a two-sided stop sign? Because that would be weird. Like, some people are like, they have to stop, but we don't. We're coming the other way.
Yeah, no, we'd do a bi-directional. So it'd be stopping from Doherty's coming into Shake Shack and then from Shake Shack going into Doherty's.
From Doherty's to Shake Shack is more the um, the way that the traffic would come.
But we can only.
Right.
You wouldn't cut through as much unless you were going to one of the stores there.
Well, if you talk hard enough, people aren't gonna do it.
Right.
Right?
Right, right. They just won't do it.
Um, the, a a a stop sign in the middle of it. Do you know what I'm saying? So you have to kind of go around either side of it?
That gets cleaned out by the first truck you never put back.
Just, okay.
The first, the first two lane that goes through there takes that thing out.
That's why Attorney Stone.
We're still close.
Design sites. Yeah, Attorney Stone designed sites for that very reason.
Um, so anyway, the rest of the building, I think, and site layout was good. This is the extension that they showed, the sidewalk extension, right? Down bridge.
Yes, yep. Oh, and Eric, did you wanna talk about the curving stuff real quick?
So.
I noticed that there, there might not be curbing along the front sidewalk where the parking spaces are. I didn't see any note about it. Um, and they mentioned there are other curbing. The site legend kinda shows a bold line that looks like the line is there. But there's no curb cuts for ADA access or for the dumpster access. There's no notes about it and I believe they expect to drive over the curb to get in there to get the dumpsters. So I didn't see any note about curving along the sidewalk.
Were they showing note, uh, note nine or nine, what does it say? Looks like bollards probably.
Yeah, you're tucking along the front of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw bollards there too. It looks like they're doing a flip curve.
I just didn't see any, any mention of any curb there. And I would have expected there to be something about curb cuts.
Looks like it's just gonna be flush.
Yeah, I'm trying to. I'm trying to figure the, the condition right now. I'm trying to pull up.
Yeah, otherwise you wouldn't be able to drive to get that, uh, the dumpster pickup.
Right.
As I recall, it's sloping away from the building pretty significantly.
Yeah, right now, I mean, it's obviously all overgrown in the, in the photos, but there is no, there is no curb.
And they plan on taking out the existing sidewalk and putting in a new one.
There's no sidewalk there right now. It's just like a gravel bed. So it was all flush. I mean, I don't know how well people remember, but the first, where the first accessible stall is used to just be striped and that's where people would walk in. There was a, a sidewalk along the, the front of the building that flushed with the parking lot. So the curving came off Erie, up, turned back towards Friendly's and then terminated in that corner. And everything else is flush. So they're taking out what looks to be a gravel bed that used to be there along the front of the building and putting the sidewalk.
Looks like they might have been curb bumps or old concrete, looks like across the front, but.
They almost look like, you know, wheel stops.
Yeah. Well, it's all gonna be new in there anyway, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's all new. But there is no, there's no curb or no sidewalk. It's all flush. That's why they have all the bollards there.
Yeah, I, I think that's okay. I mean, that's, that's a, a common detail uh for a flush condition there, as long as they've got good drainage away. I think it's actually more inviting.
Yeah, actually it does, it does look like it slopes back towards the curb cut for Doherty's.
Just going by what's in the design guidelines. And then the only other thing I saw was the lighting was a little bright past the property lines and it seemed a little dim on the patio there. It's like almost completely dark if I'm reading the plan right. The photometric plan.
Okay, photometrics.
Okay. Uh. What is the site plan?
When, when do we anticipate?
Right in five seventeen.
We're still backed up.
Is that what you're talking to you?
Okay, I can, you know, yeah. I speak English every few months, but try it today.
So we'll just have to coordinate with Jamie in terms of language in there for conditional approval.
I think the landscaping's a must though, like their landscape art, so I don't think it's just a job.
Right. Okay. Yeah, so it would just have to, so Jamie, in that resolution, can you just add language around the condition, the conditional approval based on review and acceptance by DOT for sidewalks and landscaping right away?
Yes. And was there that discussion that just ensued, is there any condition on that?
I don't, I don't think so. There was no change that anybody's looking to make on that site plan, right?
No.
So what is it that we're looking for from DOT that they're gonna coordinate for future sidewalks?
Well, they, yeah, they, they proposed sidewalks that wrap the corner of Bridge and Erie and extend down Bridge that need to be reviewed and accepted by DOT as well as, we need to grab the landscape plan. Do we have the landscape plan that they sent? Um, as well as additional landscaping on that corner to kind of dress it up so that it, it complements uh Chick-fil-A on the other side.
Okay, I'll send some language around about that.
So it's just based on review and approval by DOT? If not, I mean, I don't know what we, DOT says, no, we don't really have.
And I think they'll say yes, they have said they were open to the sidewalk, so I think they just need to see it on the plan.
Right.
And they said they were open to landscape, so it's short, it's not gonna be definitely a stop sign, so I think it's just better.
Right.
It was, it was pulled pretty far back. It was back near the, probably the.
Yeah, which is fine. I just wanna kind of dress that, that side up and have it, have a, have that corner look nice again. Chick-fil-A's doing a lot of work on the other side of the street, you know, should be cleaned up here as well and finally that corner will back to life. Okay. Any other discussion on that one?
So is that not just dark?
Zero point one, zero zero.
There's no.
We have lights on that.
On the corners.
I don't know how. Point nine, right at that, drop point nine, point one, so it's like a very big head. And then if I was doing the, the min-max ratio, the full B ratio, it seemed like it exceeded the best I could figure it out. And on their table, it looks like they updated it. I thought so, I did.
Mark, you had enough to you know, look at this? So I think they're right up right there, Eric, right? I mean, there's
Yeah.
I mean, there's some spots where it's a little bit high. I would ask.
I just thought they have their patio right there. I don't know what they're. You're just gonna walk in.
I mean, that would be. I, I, I would send it back home and ask them, right, to say, hey, it looks like you got some spittle over a couple spots and the patio looks pretty dark, so. That would have been, I mean, they're not gonna get that. Maybe they can, correct? Before Thursday.
I didn't know I'd read these that good a month ago. Now that I'm looking at it more, it's making more sense.
Oh, you got it. You got it.
Okay. So have that discussion with them, you know, that, I think what we got to have that as a condition as well, that the lighting lines will be approved. But it shouldn't be a big deal for them, I mean, it's just a fair.
Tweaking ahead, tweaking ahead soon. Done. Um. Verizon. Is it Erie Boulevard? If everybody kind of remembers back, this was, they wanted to put the antennas on top of Dick's and Michael's at one point. They had one that was right on that drive aisle coming in.
Yep.
They were gonna adjust that. So this is a, a preliminary, essentially an update. Um, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that they changed the Michael's
It's just the Michael's, yeah.
Marquee essentially, right? And so they widened what up?
Yeah.
They widened the Michael's marquee a little bit just at the roof line to conceal it so that you can't see it.
I don't know why they sent us these things, like.
Just four, I mean, forty pages long.
I thought it was updated progress.
Be hidden?
It was a second, uh, we, uh. I tried to confuse you.
Whatever, it's fine.
Looks like there's a lot of me. Just letting you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, like, I don't need to know camera ray. It's updated.
There's more photos in there somewhere to deal with, yeah.
There's. So I think that's the existing.
Right.
So you, you see the. Then you're showing the antenna without it, right?
Right.
And I believe the next one, like a lighter.
So there were no issues with the ones around the back of the building?
It was really just that one array that was right in the.
Right next to the front portal entrance.
Right.
Piece there that was kinda in your face.
They extended the marquee in front of Michael's by probably I don't know, six or eight feet. And they tucked the antenna back behind there. Let's just make sure this is the right submission because he's still vision. Go back to the folder. Is there? With supplemental application five six.
Is he anything over there?
Yeah, the, no, I'm not.
Yeah, zoom in the bottom. Right, that, yep.
Yeah, zoom down in the supplemental application. There's stuff, there's pictures there.
Hold on right there, that one. Down at the end.
Yeah.
Right. Well, there's, there's the schematic right there. So this is what, this is what we're looking for right there. A little bit there. So that ray
Right, yeah.
The array that you see, so there's Michael's, the extension. You can see the extensions on both sides.
Yep.
And then it conceals the one that's right there directly ahead of you. The one that you can see is the one all the way on the backside of the building.
Yep.
What does that mean, transparent enclosure though?
Zoom in on it. Scroll down to the photo.
Transparent enclosure. Like a perforated screen?
Kind of an oxymoron.
Is that, is that for frequency RF transparency?
RF.
So basically what it is, so yeah, so radio frequency transparent, so assuming that is not like a big CMU block wall or something.
Can you scroll down? There you go. There you go. Right there.
Little wings, okay.
How much is visible from the side? Do we know?
Visi, what do you mean? How much of what is visible? Do you rate?
Really, if you're looking flat onto the building, okay, you can't see it. But if you're over like towards Burlington, can you see anything?
It would be, yeah, I mean, it would be on the left side of Michael's is where that array is. Um, so if you, let's just say you were at Delta Sonic looking over, you're probably gonna see a little of it. But you're also gonna see the one that's further down behind Dick's on the corner. I think there's one there that if you were way over by the bank or, um, uh, Best Buy, you know, in that direction, you might see those arrays. But the image or the view from Erie as you're driving along will all be concealed.
Okay.
You won't see them.
Okay, seems pretty benign then.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a preliminary. We'll let them, you know, give them ten minutes of time to kind of present the updates. Uh, ask any questions.
Does this mean that the, the cellular antennas that are just to the south over there by the post office on that kind of decrepit building, are they gonna go away eventually?
I doubt it.
Those are, it'd be nice if these were replacing those.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you, but I doubt that they're actually gonna go away. So that would be a preliminary and this would be one that if we look at it, we don't have any huge outstanding issues or concerns that if this board's interested at the next meeting, we get them back and just approve it and get it off the plate.
First question. We just realized the other day this wasn't for sun to the county, but we first got it, no.
Oh, it wasn't?
But you said there's a ton that's already on the dicks.
No, posed.
Oh, okay, so this is a particular location.
Yeah, this was all part of like, if you look at the uh, the charge, we had them moved into the corners to particular locations. The one that we just couldn't get around was the one that was right on that drive aisle.
So there's nothing on this, on this, uh, yeah.
And currently, I don't believe there is.
Right, how close to that?
Cause they, they extended.
I think it's all the same company. They just, because of the size of the building, they can place them for coverage.
Right, yeah, I just didn't know if there was something there already and they considered a little location.
No, I don't. I don't think so.
I mean, it would be exceptional. I mean, I don't know.
Okay, so it has to go to county. So there's no, there's no pushing them to the next meeting. We have to send it off to county before we can do anything anymore. Um, number seven on our list is generator. This is at the Hagway Building. Tell us, they wanna add another generator. Community Bank is in there. They've got a server data center. They wanna add an additional generator, um, along Hagway Drive. Um, concerns, at least in the initial look at it, are just the size of the generator. Um, you know, it's probably as big as the one that's already there. So they would be doubling it up, but they do show some kind of robust plantings. Alright, so in the upper left image, you can see a generator right there. They wanna place another generator just to the right of that. Same basic size. And then they would run the, our variety up Hagway, turn the corner and kind of conceal the generator from the street in that, in that fashion. Not a whole lot that we're able to do. You can't really stick it. You can't put it elsewhere on site. So screening it right now is the best option. This will be a, a concept that will be able to come, come in and do a presentation. You guys can ask any questions. Any questions on this one for now?
No.
Fulton?
It really works about power failure, I guess. His facility has so many generators.
Yeah, I think it has three and four along that one wall. I don't, it has to be for sure. I can definitely, looking back at the site, I found several applications for generators and antenna, yeah. Okay, Fulton, this is along forty-one. Um, this is what you see in the dark areas, the, the parking lot, which faces down to forty-one, which is on the plan south along here. They want to, currently it's the Wild West. There's no striping. There's nothing. It's just a giant blacktop space. They have started doing a little work on the right-hand side and replacing some of the asphalt there. They want to create a concrete lay-down space, which is the rectangle in the middle. They want to essentially mill and repave the entire parking lot, stripe it. Um, and add a dumpster pad, which is all the way on the right-hand side. The issues that we talked about for this one really were around establishing a parking count at baseline. Cause there really isn't one as of right now, right?
Yeah.
Um. Where's my notes on this one?
Um, DOT, state DOT didn't have any comments about drainage, but they would like to add a comment that there could be no light go around the forty-one.
Okay. So looking at the, the lighting plan, making sure that we're zero cutoff at the property line.
Yeah, they said the lighting values are low and not encroaching it in the right of way, but since the lights on the building are directed toward at forty-one, they should be shielded.
Okay. So that's a comment. So that's a comment, I can go back to the applicant on that one. Mark, you were.
You guys put in a, a piece of equipment facing the throughway a year or two ago, and I, I know we talked about it. Was there some screening or enclosure around that piece of equipment? Is that being affected by this work?
I don't think it's being affected, that was the.
The tank?
The tanks, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
I don't believe there was anything around the tanks.
I didn't see any screening on the, just like the Google.
There's no screening on the tanks.
No, we're in the application, that's what Doug's asking.
I believe there was a process tank that was put in there, Doug.
Yeah, that's what I, I remember.
Else on this app.
It was such a, such a minor amount of work at the time that I think we looked at it and I'm, I'm not even sure it was a formal application.
I don't think it was.
I didn't find any.
Yeah.
Looking back.
The, the other thing that, that I would recommend is, um, it's, it's basically an improvement over the existing pavement. But over the years, there have been battles on drainage between Inficon and this property, which was formerly Edward Joy. So I, I, no, I would, I would request a, just a drainage letter that basically says, hey, we're not gonna have any impact here, and then, you know, we do. Right, go, go back on Mike LaSalle for any issues that may.
So while we're talking about drainage, I know Mark was looking at or made a comment that a SWIP is likely needed on this one.
No.
No.
No, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, they're not impacted enough.
No.
Not, not gonna, okay, but we do, we do have the right to just say, hey, Mike, you know, tell us there's no impact. But where I guess I was going is if we're talking about the property line along forty-one down there, looks like they are regrading to do a swell. But there are trees currently. Along that property line. So there needs to be discussion around how the trees are being preserved, I mean, how they're gonna regrade those around the trees and not impact any of the, the roof line. Around the trees, but we had also talked about adding some additional screening because that laydown area, that rectangular box in the middle of the parking area. Um, where they'll load and offload. Whatever manufacturing. Stuff they do. Onto trucks, we wanted to actually increase. The screening with low, like our variety or some, some low screening along forty-one so that we don't see that, because we pulled up an image.
Pretty ugly right now.
I'm sorry?
Pretty ugly right now.
Yeah, I mean, we pulled up the image and it's pallets and other stuff that's being stored up behind the, the building, and to screen that area, if that's where they're putting a bunch of stuff would be. Ideal. So I don't know how that, all the landscaping along that south property line or plain south property line. Um, will be impacted by any of that grading, but if they rip out all the trees, we're gonna need.
They have a chain link fence there also. In border of the tree line too.
It's probably DOT, is that theirs or DOTs? Cause it's continuous, I think that's DOTs, yeah.
So does that mean they're gonna take out the fence line and replace it? And they're showing, they're showing, they're showing grading right up to the property line. So it's on, it's on the, uh, maybe the, you know, maybe that site plan is correct, the fence, as I look, zoom in, the fence is on the highway side of the trees. Yeah, okay, that's, that's accurate. Little card for that one.
And so then all the, all the water's draining to the plain east side into that low area in the back, and I think they're working its way. Out to DOT right away, right? So. So this will be concept as well.
Um, may, may I back up to the Verizon project? Um, that is in, in our, Alana, our GML opting out agreement, that would not be referable.
Are you talking about the co-location?
The, right, the addition. Right, the, the, their antenna on the building, right?
Yeah, there's not an antenna there already, I don't know if it's considered a co-location.
So I, I think that it's, um. That it's a modification to the existing shopping center. That doesn't involve, involve construction of new leasable space. They're just putting that on the, on the building.
Can you read me what the exemption says?
Yep, modifications to existing shopping centers accept new construction of leasable space. Changes to freestanding outbuildings or driveways or an increase or decrease in the total number of parking spaces by ten percent or more.
But there was that, they specifically noted that it, it would not be referable if they were co-located, but I thought there was another section in there saying adding antenna. Where it were previously would be referable. Don't have that in.
I, I. I don't think so.
I see what you're saying about modification of a building, but I thought there was a specific note about adding antenna where they weren't already existing.
Jamie, would that open us up so in the future they wouldn't have to come to us at all?
No, that just has to do with referring it to county. That, that, it's not, it does still need to come to us, it's just, there are things that don't need to be referred to county. And, and we were talking about putting them off because it had been referred to county, and I guess I'm questioning whether it does need to be referred to county.
All right, Jamie, if you think that works with the shopping center, I, I don't.
I really do.
More than no position listed.
I don't think they would care, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we can, we can. Take that out, so if it, it's not referred, does that change what we're doing? Are we gonna, um, are we okay with it now? Or was there anything that needed to be done?
If there's no need to go to county, then. I mean, I'd like to, if you guys have gone through the, the drawing set, making sure that the details and. Everything's fine, that's one thing, I, I'd probably like the board to have an opportunity to hear them. And then approve them at the next meeting in two weeks. I had it.
If you recall, everything, when, when it came in last fall, everything was fine, there is, um, a little structure in the back.
Yes.
Right, you have, like, you have the dumpsters and stuff, so, so everything was fine, the only question. All of us had was, hey, come on, you can do better, screen, there was antenna up front, and Jared Lusk and your colleague was online, and he's like, yeah, you guys are right, let me. Let me get back to you, right, so he finally got that. So it's a pretty decent.
Right. So I, I mean, I think if they've screened, if they've screened it, I mean, it seems like a pretty minor thing to put off.
Yeah, that, that was our big push last time was the screen from the front, that was our, our hangups.
That's right, yeah, that was, that was it.
That was our only hangup too, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it was just a one, one antenna right on the front, that we just didn't wanna, we didn't want people to see it when they were driving, not.
Yep, correct.
Driving.
Are there any engineering comments or concerns that happened at that time?
I don't believe there were. So let's, let's hear them out in two weeks, we can. You know, get them back on, we'll give these guys an opportunity to do a full, full review. Get them back on again, approve in two weeks.
Mark, is this one you wanna review?
Again, I'm just, like, what, what's the review?
I'm not sure there's anything to review.
Yeah, I don't think there's.
Yeah.
Right?
Did they go to the ZVA already, the special use permit?
Which, which one are you talking about, Alana?
Horizon.
Horizon. Right, no, I don't need to review that.
Yeah, there's nothing to review.
And you know what, it does need to go to ZVA.
Seven hundred fifty feet of these, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Oh, oh, got it.
Actual permit.
So can we make that recommendation at this meeting to send it to ZVA?
Yeah, this, well, if it's, and it's gonna go to ZVA, we're not gonna see this for another month, probably.
And that's fine, but let's, let's make that recommendation tonight to get them onto that one, so that we're not holding them on.
And are they aware of the, um, that they've gotta do that?
Yes, they sent that application.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense then, all right. We'll do a recommendation, just, uh, you know, that it's not affecting anything on the. For the seven fifty. Okay, thank you.
So it's gotta go to ZVA.
Yeah, so that, that would be a recommendation to ZVA.
Okay.
Um. Last up, you guys can talk about this one, so this is the Chen Plaza, this is. Um. Across from Tops. The split plaza and the signage, kind of getting a multi-tenant sign package together for that one.
Yeah, for the left side, it was the left side of the, um. Of the building, and.
Yes, I am.
They're trying to open a spa in one of the spaces, and we figured out, we're not gonna require a site plan for that, but they do wanna do a multi-tenant sign package. Which we've been pushing for, um, so that's what the site plan is for, is just the sign package, and those are the signs that they're proposing. We went back, Eric searched through the history of this site, trying to find, um, the multi-tenant sign package for the right side, we couldn't find anything, every, it looked like everything came in as a single. Proposal, um. It's really hard to look through some of our far back records, cause it just says like sign, there's like information.
Not a lot of detail.
Yeah, I did a deep dive too, trying to find anything, um, nothing, just, uh, permits, pulls, and, uh, there was a couple permits pulled for the fixation, the light fixtures outside. But, uh, no site plan, just a building permit.
So the next time that the right-hand side comes in for a sign permit, we need to tell them they need a multi-tenant, tenant sign package, or you go out and. Yeah, I'm not sure what we're gonna do about the right side, but I guess we'll focus on that.
Trying to get in touch with them, and it's been really difficult.
Yep.
So we don't wanna hold these guys up forever, it's been held up for a couple months while we were waiting for the signage, and, um, you know.
Guys, I gotta, I gotta drop off.
So what do you think of the signs?
So that, that's an interesting point, right? So normally we see signs that we like. So like the vendors, the vendors in Congress, right? I mean, they, they come in and, you know, they've got national chains, and, you know, you see a sign with some depth and maybe a backlit sign or, you know, some, some color, you know. They, that, that's what I think, and everything on the boulevard, those are the type of signs you see. You know, the problem we're gonna have here is you go into the code, and what you see here is probably compliant.
Right.
But I don't think this is what anybody envisions as a sign into it, so, you know, once these go up, we're gonna hear people complain that the signs look like crap.
Well, I think, I think this board still has site plan review over aesthetics of a building, including the signs and the multi-tenant sign package. That's why I'm saying.
That's my question to you, Jamie.
No, no, we do, we do, yeah, so, you know, these are a composite metal panel, I believe, with nine-inch tall white lettering.
So, so I think.
No, no lighting, no power, no nothing, it's just.
So, so this, just like the ones that people complain at Pickwick, the little Pickwick Plaza. Those are compliant, but nobody likes them, cause they look like crap, right? I mean. And I think you're gonna get the same comment here, you know, unless, like you said, Jamie, you know, we have a little bit more jurisdiction to brighten these up, because if you look. They're not very thick, um, they're on a piece of aluminum, right, I think it says up in the corner how thick it is. Um.
It was like three millimeters.
Yeah, like three millimeters or something, right? So, so they're basically.
It's got an oil can.
Yeah, but, I mean, and, and even down to just the aesthetics of the letters, you know, some letters are nine inches tall, some are four inches tall.
So they do have an option on it as consistent height.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. But yeah, the code, it does, all it really says for room for us is it has to be architecturally compatible with the building, so I think there's your chance.
I mean, the building itself is pretty boring, so.
Yeah.
I think the sideboard is just a painted piece of plywood.
Yeah, it could be a piece of painted plywood.
That's all it is, yeah.
Yep, pretty much, Doug.
It's. It's pretty bad.
So I don't know what you say, I mean, if you're, you're presented with this, you're not designing it for them, but you need to give them some idea of what is being looked for. It doesn't, do signs have to be lit? I mean, that's.
I don't think so. I, I mean, you know, that sign code.
Or do we?
The sign code goes on and on and on, but, I mean, Eric shaking his head, no, and I, when I looked at it the other day, when I looked at this, I'm like, I, I guess this is compliant, right? Because there's not a lot of teeth in the, in the sign code, even though it's.
I, I, yeah, I, I just, yeah, but remember, we're not in the sign code, we're in, we're in site plan review for a multi-tenant sign package, so that's where we're.
It's an architectural feature that, that really needs to work with the building, and, um. We don't have a lot to work with the building either.
That's exactly it, you know.
The whole, the whole plaza.
I don't know if there's a plaza we wanted to rent them to, to look at for example, or.
Send them down to Harfles.
Do we have a picture of what the signage looks like on the other side of the plaza?
They're like the vinyl, they're screwed to the wall.
Kind of the same, just with color, though.
I'm trying to remember, I knew they were a color, do, does a grill or restaurant, uh.
How about, how about like the plaza, uh, I don't know what's in there now, but it, right, it used to be the Sporting Foot, and it was, uh, next to Jack Apple Seeds. What's the name of that steakhouse? That's kind of Class B, playing against boards was in there once. You know, it's kind of Class B space, I don't know what their signs look like. Or Grazzi Strip Mall, right, I mean.
Yeah, those look about the same, just a different color.
Yeah.
By the way, I don't think those signs are compliant on that other building, cause they're hanging below the eve. That, that.
In like, yeah.
The one, that one down the street that we're talking about?
Yeah, and I, that looks like those all have, yeah, they've all got lights over them.
Yeah.
Some of them look like they're like hanging banners or something.
Yeah, that's really like the, well, you can see the smoke shop one is, I think the Indian, the Indian bazaar one is, and I think that. All the rest of them, I think are printed. Or rigid signs, but. You know, certainly the, the vinyl banners are not acceptable, so is it, is it the fact that it's just black and white?
What if it were white and black? What if it were white and black, not black and white, like opposite?
Well, that would make more sense, cause these are all white background.
Yeah, but I'm sure he's doing it.
Some performance, not much, but.
Sure he's doing it because he doesn't wanna look like the other side.
Does he not own both sides?
No.
No, it's in the middle, it's two orders.
Yeah, but.
It's so complicated.
I understand he doesn't want to, but, but we're looking at it architecturally speaking, which we're entitled, entitled to do, and it needs to be compatible with what's there.
And I think if that's the compatibility side of it, and we say, you know, the, the signs on the other part of the building are white background with, with letters. Whether it be black or he adds red, I mean, they look like they're red letters on a white background.
And this side, they've been pretty cooperative to deal with, I mean. She responds really quickly, and, you know, so I think they should be open to.
Yeah.
Their suggestions. I think it would be helpful if we could get a guy to work something.
I mean, they may only own half of it, but the presentation of the whole thing is like it's, you know, one building.
Well, that's what, I mean, we're trying to get in touch with the guy on the right, we'd like them all to match, um, but it, it hasn't been easy.
Can we require that?
No. It's a different order.
We can try.
Can we?
Well, that's, but that's, but that's the angle I think that we're approaching right now, is if we have an option to look at the, the site plan. Uh, multi-tenant sign is with this side, and we're saying we want it to look like this side over here, white background letters, we're starting to pull it together, so when they come back together, we can say. This is what we established with the plaza, it's a white background with letters, this particular sign, and also they have to kind of start to look the same. But you can't force them to put goose neck lighting or. But you can't force them to put goose neck lighting or make a, make a match anywhere.
I don't think we can force them to light it, this is not required.
Well. I, I, I think that you may be able to talk about that as part of the sign, if it were part of the sign, not the building.
But similar to the other side, they had those three goose neck lights above it? Yeah.
Or, or if it, or if it were back.
Personally, I just don't think you have the, you have, you don't have the band, the signage banned to do the same thing that is on the other side, I don't think you don't do it. So it's gonna be very, I mean, it would get very compressed and crowded, those things would be really low.
I agree.
So, but I think that's, that's where we started, I don't mind the suggestion of making it a white background with black or, you know, colored letters.
Or standoff, I don't know if that had been mentioned, but doing standoff letters would be okay, too, or, or logos.
So like a, you're saying like a, uh, solid background with standoff letters?
It doesn't even have to have a, necessarily, yeah, yeah, that's, that's right.
Yeah, does it do anything if you frame it? If you frame the signs? You guys know better than I do.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but I was thinking a frame, too, but I like the standoff letters to make it a little less busy as well.
Yeah. Yep, no, I, I mean, I, I actually like that approach still, I think it adds some depth to it.
My, so before, if they're coming in Thursday, they've been working on this a long time, it's Tuesday, and just say, you know, that initial discussion is, you know, can you bring us in Plan C, which is a white with
Standoff letters.
Black letters and standoff letters, we would be interested in seeing that.
Ask them to do that before the meeting.
Yeah, just have them bring that option to the.
Why not?
Cause they're coming.
Why not?
Right, so it's, so just let them know that the board has looked at the application, the auction provided, we'd like them to bring this third option for us to review as well. It kind of paints the picture that we're not thrilled with the other options that they gave us.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not using the other side as a precedent.
Okay, any other conversation around that one? So I do wanna thank you, Eric, for putting all of the rest of the office for putting together those reviews. Yeah. In that package, I think that's gonna be helpful, um.
Agreed.
You know, I encourage everybody here to, to read through those, it'll give you some good back history on the project, so that you're, you're up to speed. And those, per your email, will get more robust as we kind of start that process of now, right?
Yeah.
And eventually, we'll have them for everything, we just started with a new one, so as we go through time.
Right. Yep. No, I think that's great, I appreciate that.
And the only other thing to Sunoco, I don't know if you got that email, I, I don't know if the attachments were too large, but there was a good kind of summary for, had a resolution for the Sunoco Plaza, basically, he had a bunch of violations, he kept coming in front, and the board said you need to do certain things, he wasn't doing them. And so was a couple variances that kind of were null and void because he wasn't even cooperative, basically, I'll try to send this to you again.
Yeah, or send a blank, if you have a wonder iron or something, send a blank, if it's too big.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Um, but that would be, that'd be good to start getting around, yes.
Send, oh, yes, you're there, yeah.
So, so he knows.
Yeah.
Issues the board's having.
Okay.
This isn't new.
Great. Um, anything else, any old business, new business, anything else this board wants to discuss? Alright, we can end the public meeting.
Thank you.